... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the role?
I agree with you, please. Supervisor Moore.
Present.
Councilwoman McNamara. Councilman Iasili.
Present.
Councilman Pell.
Present.
Councilman Skivoni.
Absent.
Okay. We have a quorum.
All right, so we're going to review the draft agenda for the January 9th meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review it. If we had any questions, we can always call someone up to come and explain to us if or Jim might have the answer. I don't know if we want to do, continue the way we did it and that they did it in the past where we read every resolution, or do we just want to discuss the ones we had questions about? You have any thoughts on what's...
Jay was trying to get away from reading all and then, but it seemed like we ended up doing it, and it was kind of back and forth.
Because it seems like if nobody has an issue with it, we don't need to read them, but not that I'm trying to...
Well, this is draft in the sense that it has not been published to the portal and the public has not had access to this yet. They will, as soon as you finish your review, then we will go downstairs, make any changes that you've requested as sponsors, and then we will post it by this afternoon. So that way, the public then has access to it and will be knowledgeable about what it is that you're going to be considering at the next town board meeting.
How about if we read the title of each resolution and what it's about? And then if we have any questions, then we go more into it. If we don't have any questions, we just go into the next.
Generally, at most, that's what we did. That's what the board did before, or it's just read the title of the resolution. Maybe they would say, "Town Board Resolution ID Number 45254," and then read the title and then...
Like the public hearing, you want to read that, what it's, the public hearing's about?
Yeah, you just mentioned that they, you know, you have three, four public hearings on and you could just...
Yeah.
The title of them and...
We could say, because there's a lot of contracts on here just to be executed. It's for, looks like it's a lot of purchasing of equipment and materials. Yeah. But, you know, if people are comfortable with the old ways, it's just if we don't change it now, we probably won't.
Yeah, I mean, Jay was looking, trying to get away from the actual, the rote reading of it.
Because it's, you know, you read it now, then you read it next week.
Right, right, right. I mean, I understood that.
And it's not live on TV. Okay, so you're not reading it to anyone until this meeting actually gets put up and by then I'll have the agenda online. Once we're live streaming, maybe it will make a difference, quite frankly, but right now, not so much.
Yeah.
I mean, because honestly, you're just talking to yourselves today.
Right, right. I do that all the time.
I hate to break it to you, but this is how it's been for a while, so...
So let's say, you know, the... So why don't you tell us about the bid and requests for proposals? Those are just matters that have been out for bid?
Yes.
Two things?
Yeah, yeah. Tilt roll of trailers and maintenance garage, yeah, those bids are out.
And so these are the bids that came in, so if there's only one bid that came in for the trailer?
Yeah.
We don't need two or more?
Well, you put it, it puts the solicitation out, and if you want to get the one bid, then that's what you do.
Okay.
And then, of course, you can have, decide to reject all if you don't think it's a responsive bid.
And the one for the maintenance of the garage at 30 Club Lane, so order these out with the engineer to, you know, tabulate, which, just to make sure they're all...
Right. You have the lowest, but you want to make sure that the lowest responsible bidder is...
So does that come back to the board once the engineer determines the lowest responsible bidder?
Yeah, the actual award would be...
This might not be the lowest, it's the lowest one to bid.
Right, lowest response, right. It has to be something, it has to be somebody who's responsible. Make sure that, that bidder wasn't somebody who has a prior default in the past or reasons to disqualify them.
And then there's several, four public hearings.
Public hearings, yeah.
And this doesn't necessarily mean there'll be resolutions to adopt, right? We just listen to the community and talk amongst ourselves.
Exactly. The first one is, you know, the Bridgehampton, we've had a few, we've had public hearings on this matter a number of times already, so...
So when it comes up to be 560, you're gonna, they're gonna have things on the wall that describe the property?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Because we weren't participating in the work sessions on these, so this will be new for us.
Right, right, and this is, you know, the, creating their historic, it's had very, very positive responses, but it really, there was one or two people who came out who were just concerned about having their property included in the historic district for various reasons, and we've actually, on a couple of them, we actually cut them out of the historic district, but this is...
That was in Bridgehampton, right?
It's, this is Bridgehampton, yeah, this is Bridgehampton Historic District.
I thought they adopted that already. At the last meeting, they were saying, "This is the first time we've ever set up an historic district in a, not in a village." So I thought that went through, but this is the same thing, do you think?
There was two steps to it. Kelly Doyle's one that's more involved in it than I, there was two steps there. Creation and the actual...
Oh, acquisition.
The actual, the actual list of the properties. It was two steps, it's actually two steps.
Oh, I see, so we established the district, but now we have to do easements and acquire the property?
Right, we'd have to acquire, it was just including, it was just the list of the properties that are actually going to be in what the district boundaries are going to be.
Jim, what is the, um, its benefit?
I'll look at that very quickly. Yeah, right, this is not, I'm sorry, this has nothing to do with the historic, this is a CPF.
This is an easement?
Yeah, this isn't, I'm sorry. I looked at that, I saw Bridgehampton and I saw...
Oh, Sagapone.
Yeah, it's Sagapone.
So this is, no, this is, this is just an acquisition. This is just, this is a hearing acquisition, right?
Okay.
I'm sorry, that was...
No, sorry. And then the next one, that's a big one, $4.5 million to upgrade it, so hopefully we'll have somebody here to explain some of the details to us. Oh, and then the housing fund plan, Carol will be here. And the last one is another acquisition. I think it would be great if we could have a report from the CPF Committee on what, you know, like a spreadsheet on what's been preserved in the last several years.
An inventory.
Yeah, an inventory.
Yeah, have a nice, yeah, that would be very helpful, sure.
That would be helpful before the meeting, if possible, right?
Just so we can sort of make proper adjudication.
Maybe they have that already, or they might need more time to create it.
Wait till executive session.
Okay.
They're on for executive session later this morning.
Yeah, we have, we have exec, on a couple of pending projects, so we can talk to them more about that, but, obviously, it's a very vibrant fund, as we, as we all know.
Yeah.
They will be happy to listen to your group.
Oh, good. Who's coming in for that?
Jackie Fenlin and Dan McCormick.
So, I mean, we, you know, this, a lot of this, I don't know how you want to do this. I mean, I feel like it takes so much time to read each one, but we can do it that way, but if, you know, the thought was to get away from it, I mean, like this, the first one on the daycare is just a contract so that we get reimbursed from the county.
Right.
It's probably something that we always sign.
Right, it's pretty...
The Office of the Aging, I'm familiar with that department within the county, and I'd like to co-sponsor that, actually, Madam Clerk.
Oh, yeah, this would be a good time to get those out of the way.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, instead of reading it, we could just say, what about number two? Oh, they're not numbered.
Well, they have like an ID number now and then, which converts to a resolution.
Once we process the agenda, then everything will be converted to an assigned resolution number.
Okay. All right, this one about Moody's, that's great, AAA rating and just paying the bill. I think that AAA in the third paragraph is capital A and then two small As, just as a minor point of reference. We can just make that change.
No problem.
I saw it earlier, but where is it now?
You know what I mean?
Has it been changed?
I think that's just how Moody's does it. They, the first A is capital A and the next two are small.
Is it supposed to be small, or...
Yeah. If you, you know, you look on the website, that's how they...
Not to be confused with AAA?
Yeah, exactly. All right, then signs. So we buy them off the, either the town, I mean, the county contract, the state contract, or some other municipality contract.
Yeah.
So we get the best price.
Exactly.
So that would be the same for the, I wish these were numbered like number four and number five, it'd be easier to say. But the one about the reflective signs and then the one about the guardrails, that's all the...
Actually, on Resolution 45220...
Which one?
The guardrails.
I would just like to make sure, and I know that Bill, Bill and I, Councilman Pell and I spoke about this earlier, just making sure that the, this resolution doesn't limit our ability to have furnishings with wood and other types of alternative material, given, you know, different communities want different types of community aesthetic, and I believe that Councilman Pell did have a conversation with the Highway Department noting that there is flexibility in that.
Yeah, this is just for the one type of material they buy.
There is flexibility.
It's very flexible, too.
Okay, just want to make sure of that, and I'm happy to co-sponsor as well.
Okay, and then 45247, again, we're, you know, authorizing the...
Yeah, I spoke to the Highway Department, they said that's fine. I can sponsor that one, too.
It seems like, Jim, that a lot of these have, the last paragraph says that if a contract extension is in the best interest of the town, that we would do that. That means not coming back to the board to extend it? Most of the contracts just have extension periods and...
Right, they're all, there are those that have that. Were you saying to try to put those in these?
No, it says here, like, if there's any subsequent contract extensions for the guardrails, the Town Board hereby authorizes the purchase if it's in the best interest of the town.
Okay.
So...
But I don't think they're gonna...
Who's making that determination?
Yeah, I don't think they can exceed the money amount either.
That's true, as long as it's not exceeding the amount in the budget.
I think it's, I think it's $35,000, $20,000.
Yeah. Okay, well, if you're all good with that. 45247, another purchase, sweepers and rentals, they're all pretty similar language. 45221, supplies. As long as they're all saying they're not going to exceed the budget amount, then it just gives the department's discretion to make the purchases as needed.
Right.
We're just trying to, you know, this is our first time, so we want to work through it all. Lowe's, 45206 is the contract with Lowe's. This one I thought was a little different because it's, it's almost as though there is no contract yet, and it says, "The contract shall be reviewed by the Town Attorney's Office and the Controller." I just think it's a little odd to be authorizing us to, me to sign something that's not in existence yet. You know, you don't want to sign something yet that hasn't been approved by the Law Department. But I could definitely read it before that I sign it.
Yeah, I think it might be where they can go, go and buy stuff from them on a, may have a town credit card, but they can't exceed this so much. That's what it might be.
That will, sort of.
That's what you have to find out. What do you think, Jim?
Yeah. Second omnibus agreement.
The trustees had something like this, where we had a Home Depot credit card and they go buy, you know, nothing, has to be under $700.
Maybe want to have a discussion in the future to familiarize yourselves with the Contracts Division and maybe Dorothy as well, the Controller, so that they can share with you the procurement policies and such that most of these work within. Sometimes, I, you know, I used to be in another department that we did contracts that had a lot of extensions that you can avail yourself of or not. It's your choice, you know, and so sometimes it's helpful to revisit them, to make sure that they're still in line with, with budgeting and it makes sense. And you have a new head of the Contracts Division now that's been in there just a couple of months, so we've been assisting with trying to get the processes straight because the bidding is done through my office. So, you know, she's, she's been working very hard to straighten things out, and, you know, I think it would be helpful for you to...
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thanks for the suggestion.
Yeah, for a second, it's authorizing anything under the, the...
Threshold.
Thresholds to, if you can deal with, on the apartment, through the Lowe's Home Center, and anything above it obviously is going to need a separate resolution.
So then 45207 is the same layout?
Yeah. But I think it is going to do, like Sandy said, if we can bring in Tatiana and Dorothy, then we can talk about just the process, so everybody's familiar with the process. I think that's, that's helpful. Mark Redmond from my office is the...
We just updated the whole process, working with the Contracts Division to bring it, just to update it. It was a little bit not in sync with how we've evolved, so we wanted to make sure that we got her off to a good start and we helped to revise the document to get the procedures straightened out for her to use it at the party.
Oh, good. All right, the next one's 45198. Purchases from U.S. Foods for the Senior Citizens Program, as per the budget, and, you know, what do you, do you have any...
Yeah, this sounds, I haven't seen what the, it says that these are based on recommendations from the Senior Citizen Program Director, as well as the Town Board. I haven't seen what those recommendations are, but I, I am aware of the coordination with the county as well, the county senior services, too. I would like to co-sponsor this resolution. I guess it would be a good idea, though, for us to see what those recommendations are, just, just to have that in mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, all these...
Are you talking about 45198?
Correct.
Okay, 45192, authorizing the purchase of the auto parts. Just, so you're, I mean, you're seeing it, anything for goods over $20,000 or public works over $35,000, we need the resolution, and it has to be off of valid state or county or municipal bid.
I can co-sponsor that one.
Which one?
The one with the auto parts.
45192.
Yeah.
Got it.
That way, she doesn't have to read everything.
45210. Purchasing motor fuels, same thing, not to exceed the budget. 45215, hoses and belts and fittings, same thing. I mean, if you're okay with the way I'm reading this, it's fine.
Yeah, I can do, I can do that one, too.
You want to co-sponsor that one on hoses and belts? Okay. This one, 45205, I did have a question about its authorizing the purchases of lab analysis for water, you know, water analysis through PACE, and I wasn't sure if it was for any particular projects.
You skipped one.
I think we skipped 45213.
45213, food vehicle parts.
Ford.
For the Suffolk County Contract, Bayshore Ford.
I can sponsor that one, too.
All right, so what, Jim, is this for particular projects, or is this just something in general? Anytime we need water testing or analysis, we go to them?
I believe it's more in general, I don't...
It looks like it's general because they don't call for any projects.
Then we, when we want to...
It's generally that Hampton Bay's Water District here be the ones, you know, who would be dealing with this. I don't know that other departments really do a lot of water testing.
Do they, do they work with the Suffolk County Water Authority? I would assume so.
Well, we have, you know, obviously, we have our own water district here in Hampton Bay. There was some movement a few years back to, to have the Suffolk County, work with an agreement with Suffolk County Water Authority, but that was, moved away from that. There was one point where the Water Authority was interested to kind of help run the program there. They've done that in some of the towns and hamlets up west, but there were some issues at the time, but things have been corrected and things have been, seem to be doing very well.
Okay.
These days in Hampton Bay's Water District, so...
I don't know, maybe since Councilwoman McNamara's not here, she could answer it on the, when she's back, because it says sewage, so I wonder if it's...
Yeah.
But it's probably just in general, not any particular project.
Right, no, I give her 100%, no, I don't think it's anything specific. PACE Analytical, they generally, I think primarily do it with our, our Hampton Bay's Water District.
Yeah, we used to use them. I mean, I shouldn't say we anymore.
West End Village.
Village of West End Beach used to use them. All right, 45208, Technology Catalog Solutions from the Sourcewell Contract. You know, same thing is available under the...
I think it's just, you know, pretty much omnibus type of proof.
And 45212, Sourcewell Contract, again, Catalog Solutions. I mean, I think these things are contracts that get renewed annually for services, general services to the town.
Yeah.
Okay, here's another one, 45257, this is similar to the prior one, where we get reimbursed by the county for, the Office of the Aging provides funding.
Yeah, this is, this is really an important residential repair program. There are many senior citizens who are in need of various renovations for their homes, and this assistance would be critical in helping them make those needed repairs, so I'd like to, Madam Clerk, be a co-sponsor.
But see, now, this one, it says, "This contract will be reviewed by the office, contract, so we're authorizing me to sign it, but it looks like it hasn't been reviewed yet in the resolve."
Right. Yeah, yeah, they're authorizing you to, to sign a contract when it gets to your desk, essentially, the final version of the contract.
There probably is a need for the county to provide some sort of information, I would, I would assume.
That's good, it says, "Execute a contract with Suffolk County Office of the Aging, and continue to receive funding for a residential repair program." So yes, it's an agreement between us and the county.
That we haven't received yet. It just seems a little backwards to me to authorize me to sign something that we don't even have yet, because we don't know what it says, and then what if we have to make changes to it, and then we do another resolution, authorizing me to sign the amended one?
No. Well, it says, "And we'll reimburse the town up to $26,530."
Yeah, the current contract expired in December, and the county has proposed a new contract retroactive from January 1st. So it's just, I believe, you have a contract that, if we agree, pull, agreeable on, then you can sign the contract. That's the amount, right? I don't know if the board wants to see something before you vote on it entirely. One, I can try to get Mark, somebody...
Do we need to get Tatiana?
Yeah, Tatiana, Mark, and I could, you know, if you want...
I mean, I just have to make sure I read it before I sign it, then, if it's being authorized in advance, that's a little weird.
They're probably catching up on quite a bit because there's been some transition in the staffing there, hasn't, recently.
Oh, you did mention that.
Why they all read like that, but they probably can articulate that to you, and if it's something you want to discuss, because Mark was the attorney and Jim's office assigned to that, and you want to try and reword it with them, they certainly would work with you to that end, so...
Yeah, I, Janice, I did mention it with Janice this morning, and she set up a meeting in the morning just to do just that.
Yes. List of your questions, your concerns.
This one is more specific, the other ones are more general, omnibus type, but this one is a little more specific, I hear.
Okay, 45243, Boston Volunteer Ambulance, Commander Electric. Not to exceed the budget.
You know, with the ambulance districts, we, we fund them, but they, they run their programs pretty much independently unless, you know, there are any issues with budgeting and whatnot, but...
Just, just an FYI, that the second to last resolved clause on this resolution also states the same language, "Contract shall be reviewed."
On this one with the ambulance?
Correct.
At least you're meeting with them tomorrow.
Yeah.
That way, if there's anything that you want to change, you can do that at the Town Board meeting, you can make amendments if they're required.
I, I think these contracts have been reviewed, I would say, so...
Yeah, you're right, they probably already have been reviewed, or it's, they're just a little delayed because of the staffing turnover.
Right. I think they've been reviewed and they're ready, ready to be signed, but I can check with Mark, I mean, but...
Okay.
They're probably pretty straightforward, but...
45209 is the purchase of heavy equipment with Caterpillar, subject to the board, the budget.
I can sponsor that one, too, co-sponsor.
What's the number?
45209.
And 45211, Fleet Management. So the department had to have the authority to go and head, head and purchase vehicles as long as they stay within their budgets? They don't have to come to us with each truck and car?
They, they do, we get, we get a separate authorization on, on any, any specific purchase, you know, because they're generally, you know, these days are probably over, you know, limits anyway, so, yeah, you, this board will approve any, you know, specific purchase. Usually, it's either from, if it's PD for a vehicle or highway, but yeah. I think...
So this is for rentals?
This is more like, right, this is not...
Say, if they needed a truck or something.
Right, right. Highway general, highway generally does that, probably more than anybody. Where highway, for a specific job, might need to rent a piece of equipment for, for something that's typically highway, sometimes waste management, maybe.
Like when the truck went on fire at the dumps, they can, they can rent a truck so that it stays over.
In emergency situations, too, right? If there's, you know, down on Dune Road and you have to get there and clear because of the, you know, have the beach coming up on Dune Road or something like that, but yeah, if there's...
Don't even say that.
Yeah.
What about the status of the vehicles? I mean, when, now that you mentioned it, that incident with the transfer stations and there wasn't enough, some of the equipment was out getting repaired and it took a while, some of it was on back order. Is that something that we get?
I think that.
A report on the.
Yeah, I think that you have to have someone go in there and do a inventory on, on your vehicles. Which vehicles, like we do in the trustee, that we never did it before, then we started to do it. And which one has to, should get rid of, which, you know, sometimes the town garage will give us a notice. But it should be an inventory of the vehicles.
Sure, yeah, each department would, would have that.
Yeah.
Sure, Tom Hutton with the Police Management, I'm sure he knows which, and if the, every once in a while you'll, you will be authorizing the sale of surplus. Cause something's been too old, most of it's pretty old by the time we sell.
Yeah, it's, but also you have to plan for, in the future, what vehicles you have to replace too.
Sure.
Yeah.
That would help you say, you know, if this truck's, you know, it's ten years old and, and, you know, it's gonna last another, most likely it's gonna last another three years, we have to plan to buy another truck in two years.
Yeah, and you'd think that the chief and the highway superintendent would be, you know, pretty.
They're pretty on it.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
They are, they have his Tom Hutton, because he oversees, I believe, the fleet for town hall.
Yeah, Tom is on topic, Tom's very good.
Yes.
He's good.
Kristin will talk.
Alright, four five two one six. Repair and operation equipment from Granger. Not to exceed the budget.
Can do that one too. Yeah, it's.
And then the next one is a duplicate of the prior one, so we can just delete that.
This one we're withdrawing?
Yes, delete. The next three are for security services at various parks in the town. I wasn't sure what the, well, I'm wondering two things. One is, the first one's eighteen dollars an hour, the next one is fifteen dollars an hour, and the last one was twenty dollars an hour. So I just didn't, wasn't sure why the difference in the pay scale, but maybe it's based on the experience of the person. But the other thing is, wouldn't the police department as part of their patrols go and, you know, provide, drive through the parks and then go at the end of the day and lock them, lock them? Or if it's not something they do?
Is this for, is this for special events?
No, it's every day.
Every day.
These people go and they, they open the gates in the morning and lock them at night, seven days a week.
And if I may.
Yes, please.
Parks Department twenty years ago or something, this was the same type of structure that we, we always had. It was somebody who lives in that community, who's nearby the park, who kind of can be our eyes and ears. And let us know what's going on, things that Parks Department should be concerned about, or they need to address, or something's broken, or the gates, you know, whatever it is. So there's somebody who, they live there, their kids may use the park frequently, it's usually somebody who's, who's close by. And they have the keys and they, they go and they lock it at night at a certain time and we have an agreement.
I think that's a good idea, that somebody with the eyes on the ground, you know.
Can we do the same thing in the Parks Department with the flags? We have flag stewards as well.
Oh, that's really good.
And is the resolution supposed to read eighteen, for instance, on the resolution we're speaking of now, four five one nine four? Is it supposed to say eighteen dollars per day or per hour?
That's a question for Kristen.
Okay.
Yes, cause I, I would spend a long time since I was there, so.
Cause they all say per day.
They all say per day, so that's interesting, maybe.
It says per day, yes.
Maybe, yeah, cause, right.
Probably has to be otherwise.
Probably is a per day thing, cause they just.
I was gonna say, wow.
They just open and close it, so maybe it's just a, maybe it is a per day thing.
Good job.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to work per hour.
Kristen will probably yell at me for this, but I know that over the years with the beach, the beaches, they talk about extending the bathroom hours. We close about beaches at five o'clock, we close the bathrooms at five o'clock. And I know sometimes people complain, like, it'd be nice to keep them open, you know, a little bit later. I know it's difficult because.
That's another discussion.
Yeah, it is, right, right, yeah. So I've just related to this, you know, is there a way to use traffic control or whatever, but. I'll probably hear it from Kristen, but you can just bring that up.
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I know it's a lot, because their staff leaves at five, so it's hard to.
We got an email on that.
You don't have anybody who can monitor the bathrooms after five, you know, and so it's, it's a difficulty, but. You do have like, pretty nice, you know, do have some pretty nice port bodies there, yeah.
Well, we'll have a work session on that.
Availability of.
Alright, four five two five five is another contract pertaining to Suffolk County Office of Aging, where they're gonna reimburse the town for ten thousand twenty dollars.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to co-sponsor that.
Four five one nine nine, authorizing you to sign a service, senior services program. And this provides for yoga and other entertainment and music services for the seniors.
That's great.
Madam Clerk, I'll co-sponsor.
I had a note to myself on this, but I don't.
Yeah.
What's the scope of the, tell us about the scope of the services provided.
Which one?
That one that we just talked about.
Curious that it's coming from Housing Community Services.
Hello?
Yeah.
Carrick, that's.
Oh, no, I know, that was, my note was for the next one, four five one eight three. This is maintenance on the trails, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I was, I'd just like to hear what they are saying about the other council people about, that are sponsoring it, what's the scope of the.
Maintenance?
Maintenance, yeah, what's involved with that? But the bid packet will be going out, and we'll be getting bids back. Nobody's maintaining the trails now?
A lot of our trail, I mean, I don't know which trails we're referring to here, because it's odd that it's mentioned that it's Community Housing. But a, a lot of our trails are maintained by volunteers, the Pomona Trails are all, a lot of it's maintained by volunteer trail groups. That do a lot of it, yeah.
They do a pretty good job.
Yeah, they do, they're very serious about it.
So this would have, this would assign the town to maintain certain properties?
Yeah.
That belong to trails?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with.
Which I think is a good thing, I just.
Yeah.
You know, just needed more, a little bit more info.
Heard the request of Housing Community Services, which is interesting.
Where do you see that? Oh, Housing Community Services.
Right at the top, yeah.
Interesting. Oh, just as the public bid though, only that is, that does.
Well, the fact that it's going through them is.
Yeah.
Well, we'll find out.
Yeah.
Before the meeting, just to give us some more information. And then four five one oh seven, electrical permit fee schedule. I mean, where, does anybody know where these fees?
That would be in the Building Department.
Looks like some went down.
I can sponsor this one.
Alright, I think it's done.
Who goes over the, the fees on this, Jim?
Yeah.
Who makes, who makes the fee schedule, did the board on?
It's, it comes from, it would come from building and planning with Janice and Sean. But certainly should be, can be discussed with the board and.
I just wonder.
Yeah, we've talked in the past about different increases, so, yeah, sometimes we've done, usually we could do like a, sometimes we could do, they do a, an actual presentation and we'll have a discussion with, with building and planning.
But I see some of they cross out, so they, they just made a separate fee, we did the calculation on the numbers.
Yeah, and some they lowered, like the marina and the dock slips and bulkheads.
The dock slips, marina.
Does this happen every year, a review of the fees?
Um, yeah, it's, 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 Janice here now.
Janice is here now, perfect timing.
Hey, Janice.
They don't always get changed per year, I mean, a lot of times it'll be a number of years before it gets amended.
Come on, she's talking about.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
You were, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we just got to the part about the permit fee, the electrical permit fees, we just wondered how that gets settled.
Yes, so, good morning, welcome, so happy to be here with you. We look at the fees every year, we look at our budget, we look at what other towns charge, and most importantly, we look at how much time it takes. Inspections can take quite a while from the size homes that we deal with out here. So in this case, we, we, some of these permits are valid, they're valid for a longer period of time. So they seem like larger fees, but they're for a two-year permit. So what we also did was, one of our senior electrical inspectors went over these fees with, you know, guys in the industry, the electricians and such, and, and they all agreed these are reasonable.
Yeah.
So we, we kinda ground-truthed them with the people in the industry.
It's a good idea.
Sure they were appropriate and made some modifications and amendments, but we're always happy to.
Yeah, that was a good idea to.
Look at it and go over it if you want to any further. We think these are reasonable, the industry is okay with them, and our electrical inspectors feel that that is appropriate for the time they spend on these inspections.
Cause some did go down.
Yeah, so we tried to right-size them a little bit, because some were, initially we were like, oh, we'll just double them, cause they're for two years and originally they were for one year. So we did try to just double them, thinking like, well, if it's for one year, it should be that for two years, but then there was a little bit of pushback there. So we, we went through them line by line and made them a little more reasonable.
Thank you for that, for much detail.
Sure, so anytime you ever have any question, and this year, you know, before it's July and budget time comes around, we'd like to sit down and go over everything with you. So that for the new January budget, where you know what the fees are expected to be.
Fees and what you need in equipment and stuff.
Right, and time spent, yeah.
Were you involved with the one about the resolution for the, using the PACE labs for sewage and water analysis?
No.
Cause we didn't know what that was for.
Uh, is that for the water district?
But it says sewage.
I'm assuming it's the water district, but we'll find out.
It sounds like a water district AGM type of thing to me, but I was not involved.
Yeah, we'll, we'll track that one down.
Can I ask you a question about the battery storage?
Oh, sure.
What's the regulation on storing batteries for the solar houses? These batteries are probably in a residential house, one house?
Yes.
Is any, any code, how they have to be?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, the New York State Building Code kicks in when it's inside a residence. And it can only be of a certain size, and it has to have, like, if it's in the garage, they have to have bollards, and if it's in a basement, it has to be away from the boiler. Like, there's all these setbacks in areas where it can and can't be.
It's pretty, it's pretty strict?
It's based on, yes, it's very strict, based on New York State Building Code and the Fire Prevention Code, so it's a uniform.
And the type of battery you have to have in it?
They don't necessarily say, you know, Tesla battery versus a different battery, a lot of the larger houses have the Tesla battery walls type of thing. But some people just have the smaller ones, and you can put them outside your house or inside your house. The reg, the regulations that everybody's very upset about are about the large-scale.
Long.
Yeah, yeah.
Batteries.
Now, are there, are there, I mean, I assume that there are, and this is perhaps a broader conversation, but are there incentives for the individual home batteries?
From like LIPA?
In relation to the solar installation?
NYSERTA provides incentives?
I think there were some incentives for that, yeah, but I'm not sure if there's what's on off of now.
There still is, I think there's still some type of.
You know, every time they, they have these sort of tariffs or things that come out that incentivizes different things. But I haven't heard any new battery installation ones.
Okay.
But we can check into that for you, for sure.
We'll have to have a big brainstorming session on the batteries.
Yeah, and so just as a quick update to that, you know, we've been trying to engage with a consultant to help the town board review all these issues. Currently, that large-scale battery storage is not allowed in, in all residential zones. There's only two that it's actually, has a special exception standard for, all the other ones are X. So it would be very easy to just take those two out, but it still doesn't solve the issue of like, where would you put them?
If you had to.
If, because we have very limited industrial zones.
Yeah.
So we can, we're trying to get a proposal from a consultant to go over that kinda land use study.
You have a consultant, or you're, you're at the bid to get a consultant?
Well, we've called everyone, we have, so far, the only possible takers are VHB, who are very good actually, and they have quite a team of people who can help, like, in terms of people in the energy industry, people in the, you know, land use planners. So they sort of are collaborating with like a team and creating a proposal, which then I'll bring to you. And you can decide if, if, you know, that's, and you could kinda pick à la carte what, what you really need.
How far off is that?
I thought we would get it, you know, by now, I'm hoping.
Oh, you already hired, you already hired the people to do it?
No, no, you would have to, you would have to just see the proposal and decide if it's appropriate and put the funding toward it.
I'm looking forward to see that.
Probably end of the year crunch, you know, maybe we'll be getting it this month then.
I hope so, and they did say, you know, they're sorry that it's taking so long, because it was a lot of people out during the holidays.
Oh, and then I didn't realize that the governor had issued a preliminary report, is that something that you could provide to us, so we could read that and be up to speed on it?
That's, that's very important.
I did see it, yes, and recently, it doesn't really say too much, but of course, I'm happy to forward that. In addition, I have some other like ongoing business from the last session that I just have been compiling, like resolutions and contracts, just so you have it all and you can. So it's not a surprise when it comes back around on the agenda, you get a full brief.
Yeah, before you know it.
Yeah, so, but anyway, also with this, the battery storage, the other thing was that we had, Andy Freeling left the county. I don't know if anyone is aware of who he was in the county, chief planner for many, many years. It's quite a problem to have him gone in a lot of ways, because he was like the it guy in the county. And before he left though, we were talking about Suffolk County giving us some support with the, being sort of an integrating force between, like, several towns. We're all in the same boat, kind of, there's, there's us, there's Riverhead Institute and Moratorium, Town of Huntington, Brookhaven, Southhold. So why not all of us get together and, we all have unique.
Problems.
Problems, but there's a lot of commonalities and common threads that maybe the county can look at us, you know, and help us. So Andy was, we were talking about doing something like that, but then he left. So that kinda didn't go anywhere, but I did speak to PSEG and LIPA, who also agreed to be in on like a round table with other towns and all like brainstorm. So we hope to, you know, if you wanna do that, we can set that up.
I think that would be a really good idea.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, that regional approach is a great idea.
Great.
Ed Romain did offer to help with whatever we needed when he was here yesterday, so take him up on it.
Yeah, so there's a way to actually request the County Planning Commission to provide municipalities with services, such as this, as planning services. So we can sorta ask them that, I don't know what they can do other than kind of be a coalescing force and, and be that kinda place.
Every town on Long, every town in the state, every, every town in the country is facing this issue right now. It's, it's the issue about property storage, and then, then you also have first responder safety. So this is, this is a significant issue that everybody is facing that initially, I think people all felt this was a great idea, and it still may be. But it's clean energy, you know, sustainability, all that, but now, these issues started coming up with the fires and whatnot. The safety of the sites and then, and also obviously the safety of the people who have to come to fight these fires. First responder, our, our community members, so that's. First responders, our, our community members, so that's, that's so important, so, you know, it's, it's something, I agree that we should be working and see what the other towns are doing, and, you know, waiting for the state to come down with their, their report to.
We don't each have to figure it out ourselves, you know, we all have the same problem, right?
Right.
You get to book the towns to do it.
Riverhead is considering their moratorium, I know that, uh, they had a meeting last night about it, Southampton has put moratoriums in. There's a couple of applications facing, uh, Brookhaven right now, um, so, yeah, this is, this is initiative. Facing every place on Long Island, and every place in the state, and every place in the country, so.
Right, and so we
And internationally too, actually, quite frankly.
Good to hear from all of that, like, and put it all into it.
Because you also want to include the, those, the, um, the off-brand batteries that go on fire for the scooters somehow.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's another issue, right?
Yeah, that's a, that's a big issue.
And those, a lot of times, those are very, um.
Batteries on Amazon type of thing, and
Yeah, those are very, yeah, those, and the city's facing that tremendously, right?
Yeah, so eventually that's going to come out here.
Yeah, those are those individuals which might not be up, up to the standards that they should be. Off, off-market batteries that these people are buying and.
That's what I was asking you about, what kind of batteries?
That's a different.
Because I was worried about people like, with this, with the storage, if they buy the off-brand batteries, they could have the same problem.
Yeah, that's really, you know, it's hard because you can't, you know, someone can just boot order something and it appears and they plug it in and you just don't realize it.
How do we know that it's there and somebody's
They go back.
The ones that are hardwired into your electrical panel, those are the ones we're inspecting, and we're making sure, you know, our electrical inspectors back to circle back to the fees, they are inspecting those.
And those are all related to solar installations, right?
They're like, yeah, yeah, and, um, you know, LIPA has rules about, you know, that they don't want anybody to get like zapped, so they have to be able to shut them off.
Yeah, the throw switch, yeah.
Like a generator.
Right.
Full switch.
Now, the moratorium, though, I thought you can't just keep extending it, like, are we limited to how many times we can extend it?
Not, not specifically, but, um, as Janice mentioned, and even just, even with Suffolk County Planning Commission, then that, that's specifically fond of moratoriums, um, there's always a bit of pushback when we, when us or anybody applies for a moratorium. They really want to know why, and really get it to be, you know, and this one in particular, you know, we are waiting, uh, to a large degree for the state to act on this, you know, to come out with their reports on the safety, this, this, this isn't a, you know, this isn't a town of Southampton problem, as we mentioned. This is, this is an international problem, so.
I just wonder, I feel like if we just did it for another six months, we'd be, in six more months, we'd be still, you know, maybe.
Right, you could very well be, you could very well.
There's some definite immediate things you can do during this moratorium period, which is procure the consultant.
That's what we have to do.
Consider whether or not you just want to like X across the board for all residential zones, we only have two zones, like I said, that actually allow it.
Where's your second one?
R eighty, and those two zones are, um, you know, three acre, one and a half acre zone, so they're larger than an industrial parcel technically. Um, but the optics of that, many, many people came to say, it should not be anywhere near residential. The only issue with that is many of the substations are in residential, and the idea was to be close to a substation. So that, that will have to be considered, but, um, that could be something immediately, you just say like, you know what, we're just going to say no to all the residential zones, take that off the table, and then we're going to continue the moratorium, and, or just do our land use planning for, you know, maybe we need more industrial zones or more locations where it could go.
It's going to change in the future, and we might just cut off, like you say, get rid of it all and wait.
That would put a lot of people's minds at ease if we did it, but I know from a prior board meeting that cup, some of the council people were uncomfortable doing piecemeal changes until we have a, a whole plan in place. So, that's something we can talk about, because I, I'd like to do it, because I think people would be more comfortable with that if we did.
Well, then it takes, you know, some stuff out of the equation, and that would just be, um, and then we can talk about, okay, not step out, we don't have to worry about that anymore, now where can go?
But the issue about the substations, I don't know how that factors into it.
Right.
That's the biggest problem and why we said some of those residential zones, because those were the ones near the substations. But if that's not going to work, that's not going to work.
End up having more batteries in people's houses.
You actually do, it's the, the, the larger scale ones are for, you know, like grid scale storage, um, but.
Well, that's what I was asking originally about incentives, um, and, and how the municipality might be able to tap into some of that to encourage folks who want to do that, um, rather than large scale, if that's something we can assess, if that would be better, more beneficial for residents who want it, residents who don't want it. But, you know.
Because there are other places that have, you know, some other places have ideas, I know Vermont has something, right? Where they're individualized.
Yeah, and they're actually able to sort of like, use like power from, you know, say you were, um, a brewery that was not open, you can take that power, um, in the daytime and use it for something, you know, like they share power, um, which is neat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's those kinds of ideas out there, and that's a European also way of doing it, um, so there's other ways, there's many ways. So this whole study, and we'll get that proposal hopefully very soon, and we can assess, like, what else do you want them to look at?
Right.
And all the different ideas, and, and one of them would be incentives.
Right.
And also, I think, wasn't some of these large-scale battery storage areas going to be connected to the wind operations? They're going to, the wind is going to generate it and then it's starting to lodge.
Stabilizes the substations when you have battery, well, I mean, if it's at the substation themselves, they say the substation had room, they're not subject to zoning. They would be able to put it in there themselves, and maybe that's what they should do, and not have private people
Doing it.
Doing it, you know, maybe that's the better way to go about it, I don't know.
And, you know, we're running into some of the issues where these, some of these large-scale wind companies are pulling out of the, these projects now too.
Yeah.
They just, the one out off of Long Beach, it was canceled yesterday, and, um, there's been others that have been canceled, so there's, the one that's moving ahead off of Block Island is still, it's coming in on Beach Lane and Waynescott, but a lot of the other ones are not happening right now.
Yeah, or yet, maybe there's just some renegotiation that has to be placed, I think that's more like it.
Expensive thing to do.
Yeah, and it seems to be more expensive, I'd say.
Janice, I, I do have one, I do have another question for you regarding, uh, town board, is that okay if I ask a question?
Of course.
It's more session, it's very.
Okay. Uh, resolution four five one eight three, we were wondering, and maybe, maybe you might not know the answer to this question, but why Housing and Community Services is, um, looking for maintenance on trails in Southampton? Do you know, know the answer to that question, or have any insight to that?
Housing and Community Serv- I'm sorry, I'm not, can I see the resolution?
Yeah, yeah.
Agenda.
We just didn't know the scope of the, it's out for bid for maintenance of trails. We didn't know who to ask about it.
They're the ones requesting the bid for the trails.
It was at one point something that was acquired along the trails that had a little house, I believe.
Oh, so maybe that's what it is.
That might have something to do with it.
Kara just texted me too, says she's available to, for further discussion.
I'm sorry, I'm, I don't really know, I remember that, thank you, Sunny.
I thought it might have been the new trails you're putting in in Riverside.
Oh, no, no, that's all bid out, and we have a contract for that.
Maintenance too?
Um.
Oh, here's Dorothy, she's in a rescue.
Parks Department.
Hi, how are you?
We have an IMA with Suffolk County, and our Parks Department will do the maintenance.
Dorothy, good morning, so I'm going to answer that.
Okay.
So funny that you're all watching.
Yeah, we all watch.
Of course, a few others weren't watching as well for your earlier questions.
So the funding for the trail maintenance is under, because it's funded through the cable vision fees.
Oh, wow, okay.
So it's, that's why it's funding under the Housing and Community Development, um.
So we get the cable fees, then?
Right, there's allocation every year, cable vision fees for different things.
For them being in our right of way, for the cable being in our town.
Oh, yeah, we get those fees, but this is a new concept of bidding out maintenance for the trails?
No, we've, we've always hired our, you know, our contractor to do that, but this one is going to a bid because I guess the last one, I think ended last year, I'm assuming, and we'll put in a new bid, and this is just, you know, cutting branches, making sure that the trails are accessible to, to the public.
Oh, okay, okay, sounds good, um, Madam Clerk, I'll sponsor four five one eight three. Co-sponsor, co-sponsor, sorry.
How much is the fees offhand?
Well, we don't want to say that because we're going out for bid, so that would defeat the purpose.
Okay.
We don't know.
I mean, there's allocation made, but it depends on where the codes come in and who's going to be the ones there.
Well, everything that, with our bid system is online, is accessible to see prior bids for things, people can research all of that. We have an entire system to reduce the amount of FOIAs that used to come in all the time to get that type of information.
And I'm not sure, I don't remember who was the vendor that we've had for the last two years, but.
But people could sign up for.
It was never done by the Parks Department, though, that type of.
No, only because, like I said, the funding comes from Cablevision, and the Parks Department doesn't get allocations through Cablevision, only Housing, you know. It's for different things, I mean, we, we fund CTV, Sun TV through Cablevisions, we do, um, housing, there's a lot of little grants, public grants, and that's also through their office. So that's why, um, that's why she's doing the bid, I mean, she's really asking the procurement, um, office to do the bid for that trail maintenance.
Makes sense.
Those are the town trails that, you know, they cut, I don't know, branches, they make you sure that you can work through them.
They're not disturbing the land in any way, right?
I, I don't believe so, I mean, that wouldn't be much, you know, expertise, but I'm assuming it's just, you're making sure that, you know, over the winter, the branch, yeah, yeah.
They're pretty conscious about that.
Dave Dayton is the head of our Trails Advisory.
Oh, good, that's all I needed to know.
And then the Trail Committee, by the way.
Oh, good.
It's a Trail Committee, yes.
And they're active then?
And they're very good.
Uh, yes.
The Trails Advisory Board, you're always welcome to attend that meeting.
Trails Advisory Board.
As Dave Wilcox are planning to.
And actually, I believe they look, make sure that the trails are, you know, clear, and, you know, we just pay for it.
Because they organize different hikes.
They play a role.
Yes, yes.
Like if, like if tree, like, some of the trails go over trustee property.
Yeah.
If a tree falls down, they'll call us and we'll have the maintenance, or the, they, the trustees will have the maintenance, go out and cut it.
Help out, yeah. Got it, thank you.
Any other questions now?
I don't think so, thank you both.
Thank you, thank you for watching.
Thank you.
Dorothy, maybe we'll just, there was a lot of like just general on-the-bus type agreements on today too, so maybe.
So, so we do have procurement policy and different, um, different thresholds have different policies. So if it's under ten thousand, it's about two bids, if it's ten to twenty, it's three bids, and, uh, you know, quotes, and then we have to go out for bids if it's over, over twenty-five and thirty. Now, if it's on a state contract, then, and it's under a certain threshold, then because it's on a state contract, it's favorable for the town. And those, and a lot of those that you're doing, they're just renewals for purchases. So if the contract, if the vendor is still on the state contract, let's just say the state contract ends at six thirty, that's why it says maybe extended, because as long as, let's just say it's extended up to, some of them have dates, up to six thirty twenty, twenty-four, if that vendor stays on the contract, that means we'll be buying from him, you know, until his contract expires for another term. And they have different terms, some are years, some are two years, so you have to look at that.
Yeah, okay.
Some of them said, though, the contract will be reviewed, like, it hasn't been reviewed yet.
So, so you're just saying that you're going to review it, and if you agree with it, then you're going to sign it. It doesn't, you know, the resolution doesn't set the terms, so if you don't like it, or there's a question, you always go back and forth with the vendor, you don't sign it right away. That just gives you authorization to sign the contract.
Yeah.
But you, just by voting yes, you're not signing at that point, it's still reviewed, and, like I said, tweaks, if there are tweaks, you can, you know, make changes as you wish.
I suspect these agreements have already been reviewed by, by Mark and people, but, yeah, they're just like.
The ones that we renew, absolutely, because, I mean, I like there are changes, like, but I don't, you know, they, I'm, our office, the controls office, looks at the finance, meaning, when you sign, there are, there's money allocated that we can pay for the vendor. Um, the town attorney's office reviews the legal aspects, I know that.
Yeah, it's just if it's not a renewal, and it's the new contract, and the board is authorizing me to sign it, but it's not in a final form, and then it gets revised.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming when we do the contract, I'm assuming if there's a bid and there's a contract, everything was already reviewed and agreed. And then, that's why we're saying, yes, we agree on the price of, let's just say fifty thousand dollars, um, so that's agreed upon, and then you are, when it's reviewed, you're really reading all the little details and making sure that it's correct.
And the, the proposals that go out on the bids, um, are what the town attorney's office really reviews well in advance. Because those, those bid packets are what morph into the contract.
Yes.
The two that we were talking specifically about were, were agreements with the county. That, that, that language, those terms are not going to change.
Agreements with the county, oh, you mean those, but those are, this is actually revenue for the town.
Right.
You know, we provide services and the county is reimbursing us.
Reimburses.
Those we, I mean, I don't think the county will tweak contracts, you know, they are what they are, legally safe.
The county.
That's usually, uh, federal funding that just, you know, flows through the county.
Right, right, most of the contracts we get from the county are going to be pretty much, we have to standard boil, but we don't really change them.
Right, and I think it's just correct, and, um, most of them, like I said, it's a revenue generating for the town.
Mm-hmm, right, these are reimbursing.
Services that we provide for the.
Senior nutrition program.
Correct, correct, adult daycare, you know, youth programs, we get a grant for that, so, yes. Any other questions? I hope I have answers to.
Since you're here.
Sure.
Let me just see, I thought there was one more.
Are you able to excuse me for one moment?
Of course. Another town's work sessions are held, you know, it's tough because we don't really have facilities, but they hold them in a more casual setting, we use our town board meeting room, but some, some towns just have it in a, sit around like a, a meeting room that, but it's difficult for us to, to televise that.
Yeah.
We're almost done.
Yeah.
There's only a few more.
Yeah.
On the people who are retiring, are those positions staying?
Yes.
So they could be refilled?
Correct, when somebody retires, the position, position is not eliminated, it's just vacated, and then, correct. Now, usually when you hire somebody new, it's at the less of salary, but, but yes, the, the positions are not.
Good.
There would have to be a resolution that actually eliminates the position
Okay.
in order to, you know, unless it's done through the budget, but we never, you know, like, we usually don't, you would have to be, you would have to omit them from the budget, but that means these people would have to be let go, but I've never seen us eliminating positions in the budget.
Can't follow.
Um, well, we have a problem filling positions, but yes, but we don't really eliminate, we create, um, you know, some positions through the budget, but also throughout the year, depending on
What we need.
You know, the department heads will come to you and request a position.
All right, I couldn't find what I was looking for, I can always ask you later.
In this, in this pocket, it's just contracts renewal, we do that at the beginning, there's going to be, I mean, this is just a little portion, because we do a lot of contracts. Most of them are just standard, um, be, when a lot of departments use the same vendors, that's why it doesn't say the amount in the GL, because it's just up to the available budget.
You can understand why we'd be a little concerned about authorizing something that we haven't even read, because who knows what's in it, you know?
But. I would say these contracts, the ones that, um, are, you know, renewals, they're just standard contracts.
Standard purchasing contracts.
Correct, and these would be the people that are either on the state contract and county contract, some kind of a contract.
Who are supplying goods to us on a cost basis.
Correct, and have been doing, and they still are on those contracts, yes. If it's, you know, like a bid or something big going on, then I'm sure there has been a conversation in the amounts before it comes to you, because we all look at those resolutions and approve them beforehand, so.
All right, well, thank you.
Sure.
Next one is the.
It's healthy discussions, everybody, thank you.
Thanks, four five two six five, on the, um, this is going to be the resolution after the public hearing if we decide to adopt it on the water district. But who's going to be here to explain all of this, you know, four and a half million dollar upgrades to the water district?
So, so those, um, those improvements are adopted in the twenty twenty-four capital budget. Um, and because Hampton Bay's, it's governed through the different laws, and that's really town attorneys, there's a separate, uh, public hearing for the people, you know, just to approve those, um.
So they have their own public hearing for this?
Correct, before. Correct, before.
So we're just approving their money and once their public hearing gets approved, then we can pay.
Correct. So the public hearing is for the people to come in because they, only the people within that Hampton Bay's water district are gonna be paying for the improvements. So once this public hearing ends and it closes, then there's gonna be a bond resolutions, um, I believe on the twenty-third. We're trying to do all the bond resolutions for the projects, capital projects that were approved in the twenty twenty-four capital budget.
So they already had their public, okay.
Only Hampton Bay's water district needs to, that's the town law two or two B, I believe, under the town, town law two or two B, they have to have their own public.
Yeah, I know, they already had it?
No, this is gonna be, does it, I mean, does it, what does it say? This is the public hearing, is it? I can't believe on the ninth is the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And at that time, we're gonna close it and either, you know.
You also have quarterly commission meetings where, where you guys.
I think there was three or four, actually, there was yesterday, or, correct, there were three or four.
Three.
Three meetings.
Three when they come in and present it.
You serve as, as commissioners of the, of the Hampton Bay's water district, as town board members.
I think the next one's February ninety percent.
That's just a portion of the bonding that we're gonna be doing, but, so that needs to be approved first and then the bond resolution is gonna follow. So these, these were adapted in the twenty twenty-four capital budget.
Okay. We have a ten year plan for improvements to the Hampton Bay's.
Correct, and I can give you details, cause, um, they did send the information. I don't have, you know, I don't remember. I think there's upgrades to plan number three, um, but I don't have them, you know, right now.
Who'll come to the public hearing though, on Tuesday to explain, lead the public hearing to describe?
I mean, the, I know Kathleen, I'll be here, Kathleen will be here, we can talk about, but I'm sure there's gonna be somebody also from the water district.
Typically you get somebody from H, H two M is their consultant, so you should have some of their engineers.
Right, they get, correct. Cause it has, you know, the public hearing was submitted to that, to town clerk, the map and plan, there's a map and plan. So they were actually either probably, cause, um, we had to submit map, map and plan for the, this public hearing. It's allegation, how much we estimate, because at this point, we haven't borrowed the money yet. So it's estimated cost by parcel, how much it's gonna cost them over the next X years. There was, um, that schedule that shows approximately what we believe is the interest and principal payment on a yearly basis and the details of the project. That's, that was filed with the town clerk.
Okay. And just piggybacking off of the supervisor's question, would, will there be like a presentation or something or anything to?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a public hearing.
Um, I, I don't know. I would assume yes, if there's, there are questions, we can, I can ask Kathleen for the, to have H two M, I think it's H two M.
Yes, that's, that's the consultants.
And make a presentation, but I really, you know, don't give a fuck.
And they'll be continuing, there'll be three, as I said, you'll have commission meetings throughout the year too. Uh, where they'll present what's, what's going on, the ongoing.
Commission meetings to the public?
So, yeah.
To you here. They come in here and then talk about the plan and what's going on.
Super ten of the, of the.
Yesterday you adopted a resolution with the schedule of three meetings.
Right, right.
That they'll come in and they'll bring whoever else they need to consult it or whatever, right.
Addressing concerns, you know, any water quality concerns and whatnot. And we have the ongoing, you know, the part of, what do you see here? The granular, granular, granular activated carbon systems. We need that because of the, the wellhead one, because of the.
There are three projects that we're trying to fund with that bond.
Yeah, for the sewer district.
They have the base water district.
And it says that the fourth one is gonna be funded with surplus money.
That's, right, we are appropriating from balance. That was also budgeted.
Doesn't say how much it is.
It's a hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
That I remember. Oh, yeah, the amounts are there, correct.
Except for that last one.
Yes.
Glad you remembered.
Yes, only because, um, we wanted to make sure that if we put that, other people who have thought that will affect their taxes as well, which is not true, only really the, the borrowing will, will affect, cause we're using the surplus for the other.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next, um, two are for accepting retirements, although I've been informed that the first one is gonna be withdrawn because the dates are still being discussed.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? Which is withdrawn?
Diane Copperdus.
Four, five, two, uh, four, five, oh, eight, two, withdrawn.
Okay. And then, right, Lori Schneider retiring and.
I can sponsor that one.
Is gonna be appointed.
Um, with respect.
Sponsoring.
This one.
Four, four, nine, eight, one.
Yeah. Then when Diane comes back, I could do that one too.
Okay.
I know these both ladies.
You know them both.
Yeah.
Uh, just with respect of four, five, one, eight, zero, will we be seeing his resume, um, unless there's some sort of? Is that something?
This is civil service.
Oh.
Land management.
Civil service.
Yeah.
How's that usually work?
So we usually have interviews with HR and, you know, me as administrator and the chief in the department, you know, choose.
Okay.
Um, but i- if you wanted us to do something different, we could, like a projuve for candidates. But typically it's, you know, me as administrator and then whoever's.
You have to trust, you have to trust them.
In that department, you know, like the chief or the, uh.
The candidates are given to us from the civil service list.
From civil service.
That, you know, you have to interview the, the top.
And we go through the list and it's usually the top three and then we just like work through the list. If there is no list.
They're not at will. They're not at will. You'll have to take them from the list.
And we get resumes sometime, they have to. Yes, if there is a li- if, if there is not a list, which there is not in this case, uh, they are only appointed provisionally and then they have to take the test and then they have to be reachable on that list or they can't stay.
Mm-huh.
So there's all these rules.
What they can do is they could send you a copy of the resume, you know.
If you want.
If you wanted.
Or, you know, if it was like a, or maybe we would.
Typically, you, you guys really deal with the department head.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, like chief building inspector or my position or a different, you know, higher level.
You have to, you have to trust the people.
When it comes to like staffing, it's usually me, if it's land management and then whoever is, you know, it's either building environment or planning.
Right.
Especially since you're getting them off the civil service list, so you gotta pick from the.
Right, so you'll see, like right now, I'm interviewing for my, um, admin, like you will see that. But you'll see a resolution when we finally come to whoever it is that.
Yeah, the person you pick.
We pick and they accept and then you'll see a resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, deputy.
Pretty much how it works.
Deputy department heads, department heads, uh, assistant town attorneys, people like that, they'll, you'll, you, you can have the opportunity to interview those folks.
Fair enough.
Whenever it comes up.
I mean, if you wanted to see the.
No, I'm just, I'm just inquiring on the process.
It's all good.
Yeah, yeah, I kinda wanna get.
That's why you have a, a human resource department.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Do all that for you.
And this is, and this is such a desperately needed position, these positions in building departments, we just, it's hard to fill these, right?
Very hard. We have a few more coming up, but it's very difficult. Just to get an environmental analyst is like, this is taking like a year.
What do you think the problem is besides the traffic?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing, right.
No, that's the biggest issue, is that it's not enough salary to battle traffic from hours away.
So you got affordable housing and then you have the traffic on top of it.
Yeah, so we add, you know, uh, some more housing opportunities and of course, the union would tell you, you know, better pay.
Yeah.
You know, people in civil service always helps. So that is always another benefit.
Well, maybe we can have another meeting to go through, you know, just salaries and.
Be happy to. That would be great.
Yeah, that's important.
Yeah.
Well, the contract is already signed with the union until twenty twenty-five.
Right, but that comes quickly before you know it.
Sure, they wouldn't mind doing it in LA.
Revised.
Well, we can attract and retain quality, uh, peoples, the better office town is, better service we can provide.
Yeah, you could always revise that contract.
Yes.
Or we could talk about, you know, other locations or office sharing. Maybe that's an option. Maybe that's a possibility.
Yeah, that would be huge for a lot of people. That's how my administrative assistant went to CPF, cause it's in Hampton Bays. And, you know, I mean, here, battling traffic in the summer is a very difficult situation, so.
And we lose people to some of the western towns, to the towns of west of it.
We train them and then they hire them.
That's what they do in Brooklyn, they steal all the.
I get that, I get that comment from their commissioners all the time. Thanks for training them, gentlemen.
Oh, no, we'll have to stop that.
Yeah.
Me too.
It's not good.
All right, well, that's from.
Thanks, Janet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what do we have here? Four, five, two, four, six. The fire Ryan White is going to attend a arson investigator, uh, expert witness courtroom testimony. Are there training in place now for the battery, uh, incidents?
There, um, there was Suffolk County, uh, over here now, there's Suffolk County, uh, training that was offered, um, to the fire departments. I'm not sure that they all avowed themselves to it.
Some of them did.
But there was some training provided, yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, and speaking of, so four, five, two, two, eight, ratifying the agreement with the CSEA. Oh, one-time modification.
Right, that was just, I believe, the.
So it's the half a day.
Half a day for, uh, day before Christmas, the.
Like twenty seconds?
Yeah.
And the last one, now what is this? A resolution to ratify a settlement. So who works those out then? Were you involved with that?
I was involved to some degree, um, yes, uh, and HR, Sandra's usually very involved in those as well. And sometimes we have outside, depending if, if it's, a matter might be covered by our, by NYMER.
Oh, yeah.
You guys.
We have NYMER.
Yeah, yeah, so they're great, they work with, you know, if, if it's a damage claim, they'll pick those up. So, uh, sometimes if we have NYMER involved and we also have a personnel, outside consultant attorney gets involved in some of that. For me, has been the attorney that's worked in the town for no years.
All right, well, that's the last one. So.
Okay.
Now we have, thank you, um, so what I need is a motion to go.
Wait, hold up, hold up, hold up. Oh, no, he's, yeah, he's, he's, he's out, I'm sorry, yeah, he's out of council, he's outside council on one of our matters.
Well, but I will ask, does he, either of you have anything in particular you wanted to talk about before we go into executive session? With respect to the resolution? No, good, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I would like a motion to go into executive session to discuss acquisitions and litigation and then close the meeting.
Second is Michael.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, no gavel, gavel.